Those are items seven and eight on your agenda. And that will take the bulk of the work session that we have tonight. But there is one item I would like to discuss just briefly, kind of while we're getting settled, and some reasoning behind a particular item that you'll have before you tonight. And that is item number 10 on the agenda, which is a site plan modification at Ferneville Springs condominiums. We've looked over this and had some conversations internally staffing-wise. And obviously, when we get to that agenda item, there'll be some discussions about that item. But specifically, the question is whether or not to allow some modifications regarding the removal of certain sections of sidewalk in Ferneville Springs apartment complex next door to Ferneville Springs townhomes. We've looked at this, and our suggestion to the planning commission is for you to take no action on item number 10. Obviously, you can. If the board chooses to do that, you can grant what's being requested of you. But specific to that, that's a private property development, adjoining a private property development. And the issue there has to do with some surveying on that private property and the placement of a road and some encroachment of some neighboring property. We believe that if the planning commission takes an action on this or grants the request to modify this plan in the sidewalks, then all we've done is take on a liability to the city. This is a development that the city's not involved in. The infrastructure is not going to be publicly owned. Typically, on these developments, we approve these things so that when the infrastructure does become publicly owned, we know it meets all the code regulations and such. We require that same level of approval for developments that are going to be private property. The thinking is forever's a long time. If they ever were to become public, then they need to meet all of the guidelines for public rights of way. In this case, and I'm sure we'll get into this in this item, but the issue lies with the survey of the property and what were established as boundary lines for the development in the beginning. With that, there may be some solutions that could take place on the property itself. But going forward, if the board were to, or the planning commission were to agree to what's being requested, then we'd simply taken what would be a private property issue regarding roads and sidewalks and made them a City of Fairview issue regarding private property roads and sidewalks. So our request is to take no action on that. You can hear it. You can take action if you prefer. I think minimally, that's one that you may want to hear but set aside until we can make sure every avenue's been exhausted by the developer. There's nothing good in item number 10 for the city if there's an action taken on that, at least not at this time. So with that, kind of a disclaimer that we've given on some other things. We have representatives from Highberry Point. I believe some of you have met with them over the last week or so regarding some items for their development. I wanted to just point out something that we will all remember, reminded of, but just as we get into this. You may recall that a couple of weeks ago, I sent an email out to planning commission members, board of commission members, and everyone else, just as a reminder that we know some of our regulations need some substantial rewrite and revision. We're fully aware of that. And we're in the process of doing that now. But that's a lengthy, time-consuming process. And as Fairview is, you open a box, you get two more boxes. You move a rock, you get two more rocks. It's a pretty detailed rewrite that we're working through. With that, there are some items on some developments that are presented that would reasonably make sense as a part of what we're looking to amend. Part of the reason we know our regulations don't work. So we're in this weird window of time to where we recognize there are some regulatory issues with our subdivision regulations in zoning. We have some remedies that we're writing to draft, but we're kind of in the middle. And the best way I can liken it is, we're kind of driving down the road with one spare tire on. If it goes flat, we have a problem, but we can't change the tire while we're driving the car. So with that, there's going to be some discussion tonight. Now, specific to that, we're in the notes from the planning department where the item may be, something's presented and it doesn't meet the code. We know it doesn't meet the code. As a staff, we're required to tell whether or not something meets the code. But with that, the developers have been pretty easy to work with. We understand that. We've kind of helped and talked them through some of the things. So as we get into those lists, if we mention something doesn't meet the code or there's been a middle ground, that's where we are. They've acted in good faith to get some of this work done. The staff's acting in good faith to get some of this done. What we don't want to do is hold someone to a set of regulations that we're purposefully changing, knowing there are some changes coming. But in the middle, how do we kind of find some best middle ground solutions to help the development go along? So when we get into this discussion, which we'll get into in just a second, just understand that some of the staff reports that come back are reports that speak specific to the current regulations. But we understand that as talking through some of this, we're not opposed to the majority of the things that are being requested. So I know that's kind of, everybody knows kind of what we've all worked on and done. So just to kind of get us in that same window. So with that, Kevin, you think anything other than that generally? So with that, I know the developers are here. I think it would be helpful to kind of talk through, just have them just a brief discussion about what we're talking through. Kevin, kind of go down the list of the engineering notes. We can, I know Nathan's here as well, kind of talk through what all those are. So by the time we get done with the work session, everybody understands when we get to the regular business item, we're kind of set to go as best we can. So with that, I'll just kind of be quiet and turn it over and that. So Chris, kind of your show. And thank you. And thank you, guys.
Thank you, Scott. My name's Chris Pascarella. I'm with Pearl Street Partners. I've had the pleasure of talking with many of you, all of you really, over the last year or so and recently, most of you on this matter. And I want to thank everyone for, especially staff, for allowing us to be on the work session today. Thank you all for making the time to hear about this, our first phase of Highberry Point. And I'd really like to start out with a bit of an apology. You know, in addition to everything that Scott said, you've got a bit of a rookie here in terms of first time in Fairview, working on a new community at this level, entering the MDP stage. And we had a bit of a, I'll call it maybe a snafu last week. And the reason that you didn't see the master development plan in your package was because Micah thoughtfully alerted us that our final plat had, the approval had expired. Because frankly, I didn't know that we had to get that recorded, and I'm embarrassed about that, quite honestly. In other municipalities, it's a little different. The plat comes last after site plan approval, and I just never, never noticed it. And so please accept my apology for that miscue on our part. But we do greatly appreciate staff's willingness to work with us and allow us to put both on the agenda for tonight, assuming that we get through our work session successfully. With that said, and again, I've never been in a work session here before. So I have staff's comments here in regards to the MDP. And I've written out some responses that we and our team, you know, just, I think, addressing each one of those. One or two of those, I'll defer to Nathan. But if it's okay with you, I won't read the staff's comments, but I'd like to just maybe walk through each one of them and address them. And I think the purpose today is to talk about them. Is that, if there's comments?
Yes, and this is somewhat informal. We're just trying to kind of talk through and see what, okay, what makes sense, go through and have a conversation. So yes, the purpose of this is to just kind of, let's get all this stuff kind of squared away so you can guys be successful.
Perfect. Thanks, Scott. So, you know, basically, the first bullet point, you know, we were fine with, which starts out with staff comments regarding specific site plan. The second bullet point, and this is in regards to the site plan that you're shown, you know, displays areas that we have future amenities planned for. At this stage, as you can understand, it's very conceptual in nature. Our next phase of planning is our construction drawing phase. And so staff, you know, aptly noted that there are areas where we're showing things like picnic areas, playgrounds and so forth that are in some topography as the existing topo is today. It is absolutely our intention to do the necessary grading, you know, build the necessary retaining walls that would make those areas not only accessible, but they have to be fair housing accessible, you know, because it's a rental apartment community. So we absolutely agree with staff on that and plan to work with them to make sure that all of those areas, as we go through and into our construction drawing phase. And by the way, please, you know, stop me and ask questions as we go through it. Sidewalks, curb and gutter along Highway 96 is really the item that's addressed next, I believe. And again, I think this might play a little bit, Scott, to what you were saying in terms of some of the regulations. Makes sense in some cases, maybe not in others. This is a state highway. I think it's posted at 45 miles an hour, if I'm not mistaken. Kevin, is that right? So, you know, I probably drive 50 on it. But...
This isn't reported.
Well, I know the design speed's 50 because that's how DOT does it. But no, thanks for the warning. But anyway, we would just, this was something I think we talked early on with Kevin on. And we just honestly didn't feel that it would be on a state road, rural section, in really a rural area of town, didn't really know that it was applicable. And that if we did install it, it would be, you know, basically starting from nothing and ending into nothing. It would require approval from DOT, which, you know, obviously, they could certainly deny, you know, deny it. That would be as part of our driveway permits with them that we would, you know, get to that stage. But from a practical standpoint, we just didn't really know that it was going to be used by anyone or would benefit anyone. It's certainly, from a stormwater standpoint, we can address all of our stormwater needs without it. And so, again, I don't want to speak for staff. Happy to have them chime in. I feel like we reached a conclusion that while it may be a requirement of the regulation early on, it wasn't really that practical in this setting. And so we didn't include it in our MDP. Fair to say, Kevin?
Okay.
Number four, or the fourth bullet point, sidewalk in public areas. If I could paraphrase this, I think the intention here is to just make sure that there is a paved and safe method for pedestrians to access the entire site regardless of what building they live in. And that is absolutely, you know, our goal, and frankly, it's required, that fair housing regulations require us to not only create a safe, but a minimum slope is applied to all of that. Or, and if we exceed it, we have to do things like add handrails and landings and all that. And so I can tell you that that's something we worked on from the very beginning, from the very conceptual stages as we got into the design. Again, I feel like we've addressed this, but obviously, as we get into construction drawings, we get very granular on that aspect of our design, and we'll work closely with staff. But our commitment is obviously not only to abide by the spirit of that, but also abide by the letter of the law. Under stormwater regulations, this was an item that sort of jumped on us midstream. We became aware that there were some new stormwater regulations that were adopted by this body and the Board of Commissioners on the, on stormwater. We approached staff on this because we had submitted our MDP in advance of the adoption of that. And so all of the design and engineering that goes into, which is fairly substantial, even though the document may seem conceptual in regards to many things, a lot of the engineering has been worked on quite diligently by the time we get to this phase. And so we really felt like it would, that, you know, if, since we had submitted the plan in advance of those changes, and it was in the queue, if you will, that we, that being grandfathered in under the old stormwater regulations was warranted. And in conversations with Mr. Collins, you know, he agreed with that. And I hate that he stepped out as I was, I'm using his name here. But, and so that's been the direction we've taken on that. Because it would, you know, require some changes to the plans. But, and I'm happy to have Nathan talk to the specifics and the details from an engineering standpoint. But we had been given indication that since we were sort of in the middle of everything when that was adopted, that we could continue on, at least as it relates to the multifamily. Now, when our second phase of this community, when the townhome phase comes to you, when we bring it, it will be a few months down the road at the earliest. We understand that since no MDP had been submitted for that, that that community will be required to meet the new stormwater regulations. The next item, under proposed locations for the detention ponds. The property, as you all know, is divided into two zoning categories, RM8 and RM20. And as we, as we moved, there was a very conceptual plan designed back when we were rezoning the property. And as we've taken the plan to the detail, to the level of detail that it is now, that boundary line, if you will, that zoning line, in some cases still makes sense and some cases doesn't. And so some of our stormwater detention ponds, I think two of them, they are mostly, they service only the townhomes, I mean, the multifamily. But they are mostly, mostly on the townhome property. Now, we are still the owner of both sides. What we, oh, did I do that? Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. I'm terrible. I'm terrible with these things. Anyway, so our agreement there was that during the construction drawing phase of the property, certainly prior to any approvals of any construction drawings, we would provide and staff would approve the necessary easements between the two sides so that it would be clear and evident that, that even though the stormwater ponds were on what will be a different property, different ownership, that all the necessary rights and easements for stormwater, stormwater maintenance, pond maintenance, all the things that'll be required of us under the regulations would be written into those easements and properly recorded. Let's see, the next bullet point. This is my, this is my, the cause for my apology, paying some dumb tax here. This is in regards to the final plat. And again, I apologize to Micah and Kevin and all of staff and to you for our oversight of this. And we appreciate the opportunity to still be in front of you tonight, talking about the MDP. We will record this as soon as it's approved and go through the signature phase, starting, you know, this week or next. And we will not let that happen again. Number eight. So this is in regards to, we have two entrances. And I don't know if you have the site plan or if we could pull the site plan up. I know it was on that thumb drive I brought. I don't know if you want to pull it up or not. It would be, it would be the file that's marked Highberry Point.
Micah, I'll give it to Micah Hill.
Okay. While we're pulling that up. So the multifamily property has two entrances. We will share our ceremonial main entrance with the townhomes. You know, the entire community will be called Highberry Point. And then each community, each neighborhood will have its own distinctive name, you know, which we haven't come up with those two distinctive names yet within Highberry Point. But we will share a ceremonial main entrance that will be a four-way intersection with New Hope Road. That will, that will be the main entrance. All of our apartment rental prospects would come in that entrance as well as some of our residents. There we go. And if I had a laser pointer, I'd even be more effective. But at the bottom, oh, look at this. I'm in business now. So as you see here, that's our ceremonial main entrance. This is the townhome property. We are zoned for 160-plus of townhomes. We've done some initial site planning, and we probably will land around 120 to 130, maybe more. But that's about what we think will reasonably work. And so the, all the townhome residents will come in and out of this entrance. Some, you know, some majority or some number of our apartment residents will too. All of our prospect traffic will come into our leasing office here through that main entrance. We do have a set of gates that will be up here with a call box there. We have a secondary entrance here for residents only. Again, it would be gated as well. And one concern that was raised about two weeks ago in one of our meetings with staff was that there was a concern about stacking distance. And that, you know, if a car mistakenly turned in here thinking that it was, you know, it was a prospect but couldn't gain entry, they'd get stuck and may not have a safe way to get out. And certainly, if another car came in behind them. A couple of things, and Kevin, one thing we didn't talk about in that meeting was, we went back and looked at today because I became aware that, you know, our suggestion at the time, by the way, was to place signage well in advance of that entrance, you know, making it very clear that the main entrance to the community for, was, you know, whatever distance this is so that people would be aware of it and not mistakenly come in this entrance. We understand that that concern is still there. And so we, our team today jumped on that, and we re-brainstormed some additional ideas. One thing that has been there all along is that in addition to a two-car stacking distance in, you know, off the turn, we have a D cell lane that has the capacity to stack five additional cars as well, I believe. And so that would be fully off the travel lanes of 96. So about seven cars, in a worst-case scenario, could, if the front car was stuck, you know, they could get safely off the road. Now, that being said, we want to work through this to make sure that staff is comfortable. And we don't have a digital copy with us tonight, but we've got a couple of hard copies. We could pass along to Kevin and Micah and certainly circulate to the planning commissioners. But, so we are working on an alternative to the entry that would allow for a car to basically, if they mistakenly turned into the entrance and realized they couldn't get in and needed to get out, would be able to back into a space and then turn out into the outgoing turn, you know, to turn left or right. Obviously, they would probably turn right because they would want to come down and still get into the property. So we realize that's an open item. We are happy to continue to work with staff to their satisfaction on this matter. So I would say that that's still sort of up for discussion. Is that fair to say, Kevin? Okay. Number nine, this is something that I'm going to let Nathan, I think, talk about. This is in regards to the, let's see, hold on a second. I'm sorry. Yeah, this is the steep slopes comment. Is that right? So you want to talk about that? Because I think you can.
Good evening. Nathan with T-Square Engineering. So this site is unique in that there's kind of a front part towards 96, and then there's a back portion. You see the last four buildings there. And then it's got the conveyance kind of running down the middle. You know, the code in 13-101-2, it talks about the environmental protection standards. There's a couple exemptions from that. And one of them is any essential roadway initiated to provide access to a property. So while that connector road, and the road we're talking about is this one right here, going across that conveyance, we just, we tried to cross that conveyance as perpendicular as possible and just give us a quick return to grade to connect to the back half of that property. So, you know, there's ability to move that no matter what, 20% slopes are going to be disturbed in that area because you're climbing in and out of a conveyance. Regardless, we think that 13-101.2 allows us to access the back part of that property going through 20% slopes.
The 10th point, I'm almost done. I appreciate your patience. This is, this is an item that came up a while ago. And really, it really, honestly, it addresses more of our townhome site than our multifamily site. But in some of our early concept plans, you know, we have layouts of the townhomes here. And there's been a request, mentioned a couple of times, about trying to create a connection for primarily, you know, if not for anybody, for, at least for EMS. The challenge we have is that the only location to do that is here. And once again, we would be encountering significant slopes, once again, over 20% from the cul-de-sac of the townhomes here, where we're not really sure that we could get the distance and the minimum slope to work. The minimum slope, or excuse me, maximum slope is 10%, we think maybe 12% and special exceptions. We just don't know that. We've got about a 35-foot grade differential here. And we're just concerned that we won't be able to meet the required, you know, minimum, maximum slopes and the connectivity there. So we also were unable to identify any regulations, you know, at the city that required it with the number of residential units. And we may not have, we may have overlooked something. So if we are, we apologize for our mistake. But because of the, our inability to find the specific requirement and also because of the topographical challenges with doing it, we respectfully declined that comment or request. But we understand, we understand it. And if there was a more reasonable way to get there. The other part of it too is it's a heavily wooded section, and, you know, the entire site is heavily wooded. And so we're trying to minimize, you know, anywhere we can, you know, taking down trees. So that was our response to that. And then finally, we absolutely agree with number 11, which is the recorded plat shall be provided to the city showing subdivision of the parcel. So that, we will be jumping on that tomorrow morning. I believe, unless I've missed anything, certainly turn it over, Kevin, to you. And Mike, anything that you feel like?
Yeah, so I mean, I can go through some of the same comments and kind of in short, just kind of following up from the staff side. The first couple of comments, I think those are pretty much can be taken care of in the site plan. The sidewalk one, it is a requirement in our code. And a lot of the T-dot sections, particularly Highway 100, that's being proposed from T-dot, will have sidewalks on both sides. So, and it's a 45 mile an hour speed as well. So just something to keep in mind that this same section would require it under T-dot as well. Just saying that that's what the T-dot typical section would show out here.
Number three would be required.
Right. And so then the curb and gutter would be dependent upon whether enough clear zone distance can be provided with a ditch section, which is what's currently there today. So if enough clear zone distance can't be provided, then a T-dot section, including sidewalk with curb and gutter, would be required. So that would be a T-dot requirement for that. The parking areas, there were a couple areas on the western part of the site where there are parking spots on the outside. There's no way to go over, for one example, there's like a tennis amenity there. You can kind of see the pool area. The tennis is just to the left, and there's parking to the left of that. Our code requires that paths be provided. I don't think we put sidewalks through everything, but there are some parking spots there and in some other areas where I would like to see a little bit more access provided where they're not, people aren't having to walk through the drive aisles to get to amenities. So that's something, of course, we can work through through site plan, I think. The stormwater requirements, one, that one, it did come up on 3/24. The initial submittal for this master, you know, master development plan was submitted seven days later on the 31st. So after it was adopted. We did give some grace period for those that had been working on plans and submitted plans. And on our website, we just posted that any submittal on or after May 6, which was the initial submittal for this next planning commission for June, would have to follow that and comply with that. that and comply with that. So, in the case of this one, there are elements that aren't included in a master development plan that would need to be considered with the next step. It's more conceptual at this stage. The grading, as the, as they spoke of earlier, is not set. The grading is more kind of general, that there's still things that can be updated. I, I don't see any reason why that the, the site plan shouldn't follow that regulation. But I'd be open to discussions of areas where that can't happen based on their site conditions and present those to you guys.
So, so you're, you're saying that, that this plan needs to meet our new regulations?
The master development plan that's presented, I would not think it would need to, but the construction plans that would then be developed that has more specifics, specific designs of the detention ponds, the depths, the, you know, water quality, all those kind of things that go along with it. Right now, the ponds that are shown are more conceptual. They are, there are, there is some engineering that goes into this and the mass grading and that kind of thing. But the, the details of the pond, the details of the stormwater runoff, that kind of thing, are more ironed out during the site plan phase. So, I think we'd be willing to work with them on different things where it can, where we can, but I think.
I, I think our, our, probably our point of maybe, I don't want to call it a disagreement, but is that, you know, the MDP is a, we see it as a, as a preliminary plat or as a vesting document. And, and when we first heard of it, that's why we, we immediately made the call and, asked the question. Because as I mentioned earlier, there is a fairly, even though Kevin's correct that there's more detail that needs to be added as we get into construction drawings, but there is quite a bit of engineering that's gone into the plan already. And, and so, we, we respectfully ask that it be grandfathered in under the old guidelines. We, we had gotten an indication, you know, that it would be, you know, when we asked the question, but, but again, you know, that's why we're here tonight to have the conversation. So, again, the townhome portion absolutely would. We haven't started that process yet and haven't done any engineering, but certainly respect Kevin's position on it and his points. But we feel like it's, we feel like we were in the process. Sorry, Kevin, I didn't mean to jump in.
It's okay. So then, go ahead.
Just for clarification, just so I'm understanding this correctly. So, this does not meet what you would like, what basically are new regulations?
There are elements in it, there are elements that are not in this plan that wouldn't be provided in the construction.
And that's not to say that the final product won't meet it, it's just this particular...
May or may not.
Right.
Just because the detail's not there on some of the things.
Okay.
Specific to the next one, you know, the, the ponds being on too, that's, that's not an issue for us. It's just making sure that the agreement's in place if the properties are separate.
Right.
Final plat, when we went through that, that's not, that's on the agenda tonight. Then the turnaround, I think that's a, I'll take a look at that, that was submitted. My main concern was not just the, the visitors coming in, but also residents coming in. If for some reason the gate malfunctioned and then there was no way to get out. And so, then you've got kind of a trapped situation, having a way to turn around and exit the site if the gate stops working, because, I mean, even the best gates around sometimes can malfunction. So, I'm just making sure that that would be taken care of.
And I'll forget to tell you this later, Kevin, if I don't mention it to you now. And again, I'm sure there's an exception to this, but typically, if there's a malfunction or if there's a power outage, there's a mechanism that automatically the gates open to, to avoid that very issue. And there's also NOX boxes on all of the gates. I'm sure you're all well aware of those for EMS.
The, the comment on the slope, so that one, we, we have a, the mill that was provided in the package in the construction drawings, it's on sheet seven, or on the master development plan drawings, showing the, the slope there. It's kind of, I think right now, I'm not exactly sure whether that, whether that's, we classify as a stream or a wet weather conveyance yet. I think part of that is...
Well, it, it's, we had a jurisdictional determination done through the core and...
So, it is a stream?
That one is a, yeah, unfortunately.
Okay. So, that, that will change...
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one second.
Sorry, by that jurisdictional, hi Cole from T-Square. So, that stream is still a maybe from the core. The other streams are not.
Not.
Yeah. So, they gave, they gave, they gave a preliminary one on those. So, it's still a maybe, we're still going through with the core on figuring.
So, with that being said, if it classifies as a stream, then it would require an A wrap, which, you know, crossing it becomes a concern. I think part of it is where the road, after it leaves the low spot from the stream and makes that S curve at the top, that's where the, the steepest part of the entire site is. So, as staff, we were just trying to mitigate that, because if you're, if you go in and put a road in where you've got some steep slopes and try to fill in, there could be some issues with runoff and drainage. So, it's kind of balancing. And I think I'd be willing to work with engineering during site plan on coming up with a balance. If there's, if there is a balance, just maybe we can just look at some options through site plan review of can we shift it slightly? Can we move it at all? I mean, is there any opportunity to balance out the impact to the stream, both from the crossing distance and from the impact to the 20%? So, I'm okay with that, working through that during site plan. I just want to make sure that that's something that we look, look through with different alternatives with, with their. For the one with the fire department, that one, that's something we could look at through site plan as well. From what I can see on what was submitted, the slopes that are on the, that first, so you come up the S curve and you make the immediate left, it takes you down toward the left side of the pond right there. So, from, there's quite a bit of grading that's required there to get that pond end to the right. But the natural slopes that are there are fairly flat. They're right at, they're under 15% from what's been shown on here. So, if there's, if there's not a way to make that connection, that, that's more of a life safety thing from the fire department. So, that's not from the engineering side necessarily. So, that's kind of where that came from. The last one is just the recorded plat, so that, that ends up all of our...
And I think probably the last thing, just, sorry, the last thing to mention, and I again, had the opportunity to speak with most of you about this, is the, the requested variance we have on the exterior materials. I, I know we've spoken about this, so I won't rehash it unless you'd like me to, but I'm happy to, if, if you all would like to go back through any of that. I brought, you know, several images that we can, we can put up and talk about, but I, I feel like we've, we've, I've had the opportunity to talk through that with everyone. And I accept, Mayor, I apologize, I wasn't able to reach you on that, but I left a message, but I should have probably emailed you as well. At least the, at least the number that was on the, on the city's website. But in any event, happy to, you know, discuss that as well, as I know that that's up for a vote on our, our MDP as well.
And with that, I apologize I had to step out for part of that. We have a new fueling system in our public works department, and as things happen, five minutes after this meeting, our fueling system went down. So, we were trying to fuel some fire trucks and patrol cars, I apologize for that, so. But with that, I don't, I don't, I don't know if anything else. Again, part of this, as we know, we're working through kind of, kind of a weird transitional time for us. But on, on all sides, this is one of those developments where I, I think every, every effort has been really cooperative to go through. We don't see anything that's going to be substantially difficult or hardship to go through. So, I just appreciate everyone's time, kind of listening here through that, Chris's staff, I know Nathan, that group has done a good job on that, ours to have to work through. But it's one of those where this project will likely be closer to what we're moving toward than anything else we've seen. So, this will be mostly what we see going forward. It just happened it hit in that window, that's where we were. So, hopefully, we can get to that point, because nothing, nothing within this appears to be something that can't be remedied fairly, fairly simply going forward, so. But with that, I do want to just make sure we covered the disclaimers of here, here are the codes, here are the regs, here's what it says, here's really what we're trying to go to, and this appears to be something that really kind of hits those marks as we go forward and, and get that work done, so.
Very excited to get started. We, we, you know, we're, we're excited to be in fair view without, that goes without saying. We, we feel like the, the design and the amenities and the programming, and then, you know, really will, will be cutting edge for, for this market. And, and we've had a lot of experience on the west side of Nashville and, and all the way on, on the I-40 corridor over the last several years. And we, we really feel like this will, this will be a, a, a real value to the community. And, and I hope, I think it'll be very successful.
With that, unless there are any other questions, we'll take just a quick break. I need to call the fire department real quick and then, all right. And thank you guys for, for all this. You guys good?
Any additional questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so very much. We'll just kick back up at 7 o'clock.